I think, I think we're, you know, I think today, I think today this council looks more at quality of life than I, I think the county has ever looked at. And I think, I think that should help, uh, help address issues with the, the citizens more than, than what we looked at in the past.
Did she say she's good?
Yes, she did.
She said real good, too.
Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I'm going to approve the agenda for Thursday, November the 12th.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
It's a pretty substantial purchase order, I think.
Now, Alan, interesting question, does the poll, the money we spend on the poll workers do, does the state reimburse us on that, or is that just, they do? Okay.
They will reimburse us for a portion of our good, good reimbursement.
Well, because we was talking about that sliding scale of how much they could get paid, and I was wondering.
If you can increase it and somebody else come pay the bill?
Yeah, why not?
I got, huh, if it makes sense, I got it. I'm on board with that.
Our cost of living here is higher than anywhere else in the state.
I'm on board with that. If we can get the state to pay it, I'll, I'll vote for increasing it.
All right, uh, new internal budget revisions, change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Virginia Sign Circuit Clerk for Kimberly Popkins and Sharon Bowden as deputy clerks with an annual, annual salary of $25,554 effective November 16th, 2020. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for Heather Boyd as a part-time administrative assistant with an hourly rate of $14.56 effective November 20th, 2020. Any questions on the change in status? Everyone was present for October 29th, County Council meeting and legislative summit. Any changes or corrections on those? Moving on to the county council calendars, um, we will be, um, here next, uh, Thursday, and then we'll be, uh, office will be closed on Thursday and Friday of next, next week, so. The following week, yes, I'm sorry.
Man, I'm getting close. Alan, we got three more meetings.
Yeah, look at all the holidays you got.
I know.
All right, tonight we have boards of commissioners, we have fire board at 6:30 PM here in the chambers, uh, Monday at 4:00 PM Eastern Pan, Transit Authority. It's too big. 4:00 PM Health Board. MC.
Board and camp.
Board and camp. 6:00 PM Planning Commission, Tuesday at 9:00 AM, um, Councilperson Vice President Delia will be on at WRNR. 11:30 AM Parks and Rec, 5:00 PM Sewer District, 6:00 PM Stormwater. Wednesday, the 18th, 9:30 AM Development Authority, 6:00 PM Solid Waste Authority, 6:00 PM Roundhouse Authority. Any changes or corrections?
No, but I'm glad we got the Development Authority on the calendar. It never made it to my calendar. I never got invited, but I'm glad it's on, I'm glad at least.
That's crazy. What kind of help you got around here?
I'm, I'm just saying.
I hear that bus a-coming, Tracy.
She's good.
You just, you only got, you only got three more meetings. I figured you were just letting her have it, aren't you? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's a move, Mr. President.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Morning, Mr. Hess. You have a little activity for us?
Yeah, good morning. Uh, got total seven personal property exoneration. This is a two-week period, in that I mean last week, where I had a couple just to deal with. All seven of those, so one to, $957.27.
All right, entertain a motion on seven personal property tax exemptions due to officer error.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the seven personal tax exoneration due to officer error in the amount of $957.42.
Got a motion on the floor, the second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Boarding meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I did have a public service water district meeting that was in person, which I was glad to see. The Grapevine Water Main Project, uh, this was pay application, just mainly for materials. They started actually breaking ground and, you know, working on it, but the materials was $234,469.32. They approved the pay application for Panhandle Builders to Cardinal Point, that big subdivision there at Spring Mills, $102,000. They approved the design plans for McCully Crossing, 128 townhomes, and then they, uh, approved a task order for Dewberry Engineers to provide design and bidding services for the new water mains to serve the Pike Side industrial learning area. Uh, which is the next step in, in getting water to Procter and Gamble, Clorox, and any other development that occurs in that area. Several scenarios of taking water there, you know, running water down and roads and things like that, you know, to get water there. Or putting in 16-inch water mains and, you know, this kind of stuff, water mains, or they're adequately sized 30 years ago, but they ain't adequately, adequately sized then. That was the main, main item on, and that's all I had.
Are they, are they trying to, uh, are they trying to push more water through smaller pipes? Is that why we see all the leaks going on?
Well, that, now, they added booster stations, like the one there at the Pike Side there on Barney's Chicken and Planville. That's, that's a water booster station, Grapevine Road and Jarrett Stand, and those helped, but, yeah, they, the lines aren't big enough.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like, uh, when you go, uh, around town, you know, around the area, just outside of town, just seems like you, we're seeing more, more places.
And they address them very quickly, but, yeah, it's just, and, of course, the old materials were not adequate, you know, the concrete, especially fire, especially pipe.
And also your playing copper, especially copper.
The, the, the thing, too, is, uh, you know, they're starting to move water more hours of the day than what's going to probably require some more.
They're taking a million gallons a day from the city water.
Yeah, but that, and, and that, that could be, that could be, I mean, if you're, if they're trying to move it distances in, in 24 hours, you know, if you're not pushing it as hard during the nighttime as you are now, then maybe a leak that you already had is just starting to show up.
That's a problem they're having at the woods. There's some leaks in the system and it's taxing the system, you know, and they've got to go out there and put new meters in and meters on the lines to figure out where the water's going. I mean, that's at the woods, that's a separate thing, but it just shows you, you know, what happened when they take over the water system. They're fully here.
It don't take long once you got that leak, I mean, it's just.
They're, uh, unbilled water use in the, in the system's point of plan.
Is that over the whole system or just over the woods?
No, 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 this is, this is the system.
System, okay. So quarter of the water's out the door.
It, it averages 20 to 25.
That's crazy, and I assume that's budgeted that way. I mean, that.
Yeah, it's constant value. Now, that's unbilled, that's not technically leaked.
All right, Ms. Ball.
Well, I had farmed my own Monday, and, uh, our transfer tax was $242,000, which is up $200,000 from last year, uh, as far as at this point in time. And we have just completed the accepting applications for new farm properties, and we had 14 applications, uh, five of which were new, nine of which were reaps. So, we're busy by the end of the year or two.
Are they in the valley?
Yes, yes, everywhere, everywhere, there's no particular, no particular spot, and I hope to get the valuation done by the end of December or January.
Going after the Back Creek Valley.
Well, the Back Creek Valley we're after, but again, that whether or not we're the fundings going to be there, we'll need to see what's happening now. Sorry, Mark Capito said that there was money for stormwater and then pre-credit and remediation and all this other stuff, which might be part of that, because it's, but I don't know when that bill takes place.
Yeah, I gotta give Matt Pennington, the head of the office, which are all operating out of, from home.
So if we can nail, nail down when that was happening. Um, yesterday, we had, they had a very significant Veterans Day ceremony at the park, even though it was raining. Uh, normally there's one group, uh, that does a presentation at, at a ceremony, uh, but yesterday with the fact that the DAR, normally done the one at the Bellboy, uh, all the DARs, the Sons of the Rapid Revolution, the military, all the military groups, uh, did a ceremony at the park. And it was probably eight or 10 different wreaths that have been put up, they're pictures around the front page of the, the journal. So, my hats off to all the veterans and the fact that their, the groups are getting together to make this ceremony, uh, practical and also meaningful, because, uh, now everyone's being recognized at one location. So, and then finally on Friday, uh, we're, we're going to be dedicating a, uh, new walking trail at Port House Farm at 11:00.
Just wander out there around the, around the pond and up through the woods?
I have no idea. I'll get to find out on Friday. I'm going to take my walking shoes.
Oh, good idea.
Mr. Delia.
Uh, had a develop, or had an airport authority meeting, uh, had the, um, most of it was just updates on where we're at, how everything's going. It, it looks, uh, really, really, uh, encouraging to see the levels that we're, um, we're getting this early on. So it's, um, it's, it's, uh, 200% at this point, looks like a really good idea to be where we're at. Looks like it's going to pay off dividends, that's for sure. A sign is up, and they put the, the caution, uh, caution about noise on the sign. Which is, which is nice, and big red section of the sign lets you know that there's a loud jet traffic.
I tell you, if you're ever sitting there at that intersection, and, you know, if you're heading south on 11, and one of them 17s come over you, you, uh, you feel it pretty good, because you don't really see it out of the corner of your eye until, say, I know that big old shadow goes over you.
And they're usually not as hard coming out of there as, uh, like the.
Corporate.
Yeah, when you see one of them, you know, 737s or something. Yeah, when you see one of them, you know, seven thirty-sevens or something come out of there, that's a whole different ballgame. That's it.
Mr. Riddick.
Uh, no meetings for me next Monday.
I have nothing to report on right now, so. Any activity on boards or commissions?
I'd like to request that, uh, have an interview with Eric Brown from Consumer Services, please.
All right. All right, let's, um, jump up and go to, um, Alan Davis on the bid recommendation for the security cameras.
As the council is aware, on Thursday, October twenty-ninth, we have a bid opening for the, um, robotic, robotics, um, cameras needed for the debris report center. Um, it's a total of sixty cameras, both in turn and external. Um, we had distributed the, the bid globally. Um, we had expected more participation in the bid, um, process than we'll receive. When it was all said and done, we received a single bid from Document Solutions out of Cumberland, Maryland. Um, they did meet all the specifications and the proposal that was submitted actually came in lower than we thought it was going to initially, so.
I assume these are state-of-the-art.
These are, um, we don't have them in here, but if you look in some, some of the newer ones, it, it actually looks like, um, a large Sharpie sticking out of this, the ceiling towel. About that big round. Um, but they can be programmed to, to do either, um, direct view, three sixty view. They're really, really slick. So yes, they are state-of-the-art, um, cameras. So, uh, having said all of that, uh, Gary and I went over the bid. Um, we are recommending that the bid award be, that the bid be awarded to Document Solutions the amount of thirty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents.
That's not sold.
No, sir.
That's just hit the box in the.
Our IT department will, will do the installation. Um, we had an agreement with, with contractors that, um, when it came to the cabling for the cameras and also the doors, that we would purchase the cable and they will, they will, they will do the cable as directed by our IT department. But then our IT department will hook up all of the electronic locks as well as the, the cameras.
How many cameras was that?
Six. It's interior and exterior. I think it's, it's either fifty interior and ten exterior or forty-eight interior and twelve exterior.
Anybody have additional questions?
I think, you, you know, I think if I remember right, the mobotics and they've came down some, but the mobotics that we were purchasing, um, several years ago were around a thousand dollars a piece.
They were. Yeah. These, these keep it much lower. And as you know, as technology advances, um, in, in many cases, it's just like buying a, you know, if you wanted to buy a seventy-inch four HDTV five years ago, you know what you spent, you know, which, which paid for them now. So it's kind of the same, same thing.
All right, need a motion to, um, make the purchase on the security cameras.
Some move.
Motion debated.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all payers say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Um, they're expecting on the, uh, Division of Emergency Services, because Chief Gokenar is here, so.
He's the only one.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that then.
Um, the good news is we're the fastest growing county in the state. The bad news is we're the fastest growing county in the state. When, um, I talk to groups, when I talk to individuals, a lot of times, um, they recognize the, the fact that we are growing so rapidly, um, and inevitably, they ask what our biggest, what, what I think our biggest challenge will be in the next five or ten years. And the, my answer has always been public safety. And when I talk about public safety, I mean primarily police, fire, and emergency medicine. We all know from the fire side that, um, as population has, has grown, um, you know, our volunteers have become busy with life, um, trying to put food on the table when they have not been, um, available to assist as much as they typically would. Um, we have had ongoing dialogue with the Sheriff's Department over the years, as well as the State Police, on the, um, the, the ideal number of law enforcement officers that should be assigned to the county based on population. There's different models that, that, um, they use. And we certainly know from the proposals or presentations that Brian Ostello makes to the council and their activity, that, um, ambulance authorities' responsibilities continue to grow and are constantly needing to add additional crews and, and buy more equipment. So having said all that, um, one thing that we forget, um, we don't forget, but one thing that sometimes I think the outside of the organization forgets is that call it what you want, fire fees and ambulance fees are tax dollars. Um, in this body, as you know, through some changes that have been made legislatively, um, at the end of the day, you're responsible for being good stewards of that tax dollars. So the tax dollars that we, we charge to fund Homeland Security Emergency Management, nine-one-one fees for Central Dispatch, fire fees for the Fire Board, and ambulance fees for the ambulance authority, at the end of the day, they're your responsibilities to make sure that they're being spent appropriately. And we've had discussions on how everyone is good stewards of the taxpayers' money, but as we all know, there, there are always areas for improvement. As you know, Mary Tackley, um, had announced, uh, some time ago that she was retiring from Central Dispatch, uh, after forty couple of years at the end of this year. Um, Mary, um, we have hired, um, a Central Dispatch Director, Jennifer Swisher. Um, Mary has decided to, her last couple of weeks here, last couple of months here, um, that she's willing to use her vacation. So while she continues to be paid by the county on prepayroll, she, um, is largely on vacation. Eddie Gokenar, Chief Gokenar, um, was successful in his bid for county council. And even before the results of the election were known, um, Chief Gokenar submitted his notice of retirement at the end of this month. So two of your department heads, both who've been here for some time, have decided to, to retire and pursue into retirement or elected office. It presents us, Princess, presents this council with the unique opportunity to improve communications and the coordination of efforts, um, across most of, many of the major areas of, uh, emergency services, and I'm excluding the Sheriff's Department because I know, um, that's headed by, um, an elected sheriff. So in your packet, um, is, uh, a proposed Division of Emergency Services. The purpose of this position, uh, if the council so chooses, is to improve the coordination of efforts, uh, eliminate duplicate services, um, prepares us certainly for the future. It improves the span of control, uh, and oversight from this council through one central reporting figure and absolutely would improve communications across the board. I'm presenting this proposal to you today, um, after first discussing it with the Fire Board in September and the ambulance authority. I, I got switched. The ambulance authority in September and the Fire Board in October. Went through the process, um, with them, went through the thought process with them, um, and, um, Council President Gokenar has been good since he was at both meetings. I think at the end of the day, um, they, both boards are supportive of, of the concept.
Mm-hmm.
One of the examples that I use with the Fire Board and the ambulance authority is, does it make sense, um, and is there a way that we can do fire fees and ambulance fees under the same mill? Um, you know, we all know that in July, we get, we get our property tax bill. We get our MS four stormwater management invoice, or at least I did. I got a fire fee. I got an ambulance invoice, um, all in different envelopes. Well, even just combining the two invoices under one, one invoice with a mechanism in place at which, once they come in, they can be directed to the appropriate, um, agency similar to what the Water and Sewer Department does, makes sense to me. And I've had conversations with our IT department and that's certainly something that we, we could do. So just proposing this to you, um, for your consideration, um, the division director would be an employee of the county, um, would fall under your, um, your organization and would report directly to me. Um, I have set, I've looked at the, at the compensation level. Um, my proposal would be to set the compensation at level, again, if the council decides to move forward, uh, at a rate seventeen, with a range of seventy thousand, eight twelve, a hundred and twelve thousand, five forty-three, at least initially, um, not knowing, I think that's, that's kind of the minimum range. Um, but at least for purposes of initial advocacy, that's the range I would recommend.
I noticed, yeah, animal control.
Some of the early discussions that we, that we had, um, included animal control under this umbrella. Um, when I came on board, um, fifteen years ago, animal control was actually a function of the county council. And Larry Light was the chief animal control officer and was treated as a department head. Um, that department evolved over the years and was placed at the previous sheriff's request, under the sheriff's department. Um, we have had conversations with current sheriff and the, the sheriff that's coming on board. And it seems to be the general thought that they would like to keep it under their umbrella, at least for now initially, to see, to see how it works.
Yeah, that's, that's the conversation.
Well, I, I think it's a good idea that you have, Alan, to, to try to consolidate bills. I, I think ideally, some, sometime in the future would be nice to have all those even on your tax bill, so that when you get your tax bill, you have the line items on there broke down so that, so that it all comes together and you're not having separate bills.
You know, in, in all seriousness, we've, we've captured so much over the years through, um, through mass bidding, through community scales, um, that there may be opportunities through this division director that we can even do more of that, including Fire Board, the ambulance authority, and, um, you know, a dollar here and a dollar there. You talk about, for example, three mil paper doesn't sound like much, but when you consider the sheer volume of paper that we use during conversion here adds up and working in the trace is continually, continuously, um, watching the marketplace and giving us the best deal. And it would just make sense to bring, um, the ambulance authority and the Fire Board under that, that, um, the umbrella and give them that opportunity for just in mass like we do.
Yeah, I think, I think from what I've seen, time outside on the Fire Board and the ambulance authority, they are two different, separate organizations, especially ambulance side, because they got the billing for the services as well as, uh, the fee structures. Um, but, uh, I think it's good. I, I think it's gonna take someone to move us forward to, to be the, the go-to person. Um, and, uh, I think the main thing that we wanna do is try to, try to at least get them to, um, start of looking at the overall public safety scene, um, and rather than just individual organizations.
You know, we're dealing with, and Chief Gokenar has done an exemplary job, um, in, in creating and, uh, administering, uh, overseeing the first combined fire department in the state. Um, certainly we don't lose that, um, at the moment. Um, there may come a time, everyone says that, you know, where Loudoun County was twenty years ago, we are now. Um, so if there is, and, and we know that, that the growth that is, um, projected, um, that we don't anticipate is going to, to, to stop, um, we need to be prepared that, you know, if we do continue to ruin the pace that we are, emergency services, we need to make sure that we're getting the best, the, 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 the best bang for our buck, which, you know, I'm, I'm confident we are, but we need to be, be prepared for the future. The good news is the, the, as you know, Central Dispatch are county employees, but, um, other than some money that we've set aside for some, some call tapers, which Jennifer and I will be meeting about tomorrow, um, Central Dispatch is fully funded by, um, special revenues through our nine-one-one fees. The same thing is said, uh, about the Fire Board and the ambulance authority, the council. Other than providing some meantime services through, through office fees and some other things, um, we do not provide any funding to those, to those two agencies. However, the full-time employees of both of those agencies have been, had been grandfathered eight years ago and fall under our benefits umbrella. So if there was ever come a time where a future council decides to bring everyone in under one umbrella, um, it's, it's certainly, that's certainly possible. Not proposing that today, um, but we have laid the foundation that, that would be, uh, something that we would, that would occur in the future. We're certainly well positioned for it.
Well, the division director's going to have to be a, a real, um, good negotiator, listener, uh, um, definitely be able to, uh, um, pro, pro, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, to project his, um, his, uh, uh, authority vision um, throughout all of them, because all four of those are pretty strong boards.
They are.
And, and it does make sense to, to have somebody that, uh, that would be over them, um, to create the firing order, if you will, at some point.
It, it, and not, you know, I don't want there to be any misperception that there are problems now, because there, there are not. Um, but I think this council has, has had very good foresight and has always been proactive. Um, so that when opportunities like this presents themselves, um, we try to get ahead of any potential problems in this position, certainly would be there to, um, to work through opportunities and challenges internally, but make sure that this council is properly, properly aware of any, any challenges that, that might come up.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, um, and then we have Homeland Security Emergency Management. Uh, where's Berkeley Fire?
Berkeley Fire Force under that.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, until recently, we've had Chief Gokenar, who was the Director of Homeland Security Members Management, but certainly because of his background, he was in career, no. Working with the career fire, managing the career firefighters, working with the volunteers. We have Randy Lilly, who is our emergency manager, who is excellent. Um, what I would propose to the council, if you so choose, is that we recruit for the division director. Get that person in place, um, upon, and I haven't talked to, to Mr. Lilly about this at all. Upon, um, Mr. Gokenar's retirement. Upon Mr. Okinawa's retirement, at least in the short term, appoint Mr. Lilly as the interim director of Homeland Security Emergency Management. And then, once we get the division director on board, advertise for a parrot. Because as you know, just within the past month, we have been recognized by Alan. Though, I talked to, to Chief Okinawa earlier in the week, there's still some, some internal paperwork, some procedures that have to be filed with the FEMA head before we truly are official, but we do have our FDID number. So that we are, would have a county fire department.
One of the things we've been saying for years is, you know, with the growth that we have, as Alan said, our public safety is the one that we have the most, not, I don't mean concerns in a bad way. I mean concerns of staying on top of it. It's, it's, it seems like even the it takes time, it takes time to move and get things done. And it's, it seems like it's a very methodical sometimes.
And, and we know that Back Creek, if we give them today, afforded today, Back Creek would like to have to wait for seven firefighters.
Right.
Bettyton has indicated that, you know, they may need some assistance in the future. I think all the departments, at one time, at, at sometime in the future, might come to this council and say, we need more help. And we really don't have a formal plan to, to deal with everybody.
Well, we had one.
Yeah, we did.
Well, you don't have a formal funding source. That's the problem.
And that's the thing. And, and basically, at that point in time, it's, it's, it's going to take somebody, a, 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 a division director to actually put that together.
Right.
Because, believe it or not, there's, there's fire halls out there now, more than Back Creek, that says, we're going to need it sooner than later. And unfortunately, they missed a huge opportunity a year ago.
They did.
So, you know, they've got, they've got to be willing to do the legwork and do all the work this time.
Right.
But anyway, we have the chief here in the audience, we have Director Costello here, and we have Mr. Lilly here. So any of y'all want to come forward and talk, or are you good, or any concerns?
Yeah, I just wanted to come in and support the move that Mr. Davis is proposing. It's been no secret, you know, I've had conversations how we grow. And one of those things that we did talk about in the billing piece that we spoke earlier at the Ambulance Authority, we just approved funding to move forward with County IT building us a billing program to get away from what we're currently using, that we believe will be that next step to combining those two issues in the billing piece, so that our billing is structured the same way as the Fire Board's. So that we hope, if and when that move comes about, we're that much closer. We've looked at, I think there was a committee back in two thousand and ten that looked at combining the billing of this stuff. We looked at some of the stuff that they brought forward, then how it applies to today. So where we're, you know, a lot of it was due to growth, but I think we can get there. In fact, I would say we can get there. But I'd just like to speak out and support what he's trying to do and make myself available to any questions that you guys may have from Ambulance.
Going along with the billing, in the past, we've been astronomical numbers that haven't been collected. How was, how's that? But I mean, if you get into the one source, then you have a bigger pot to work with as far as.
Not much has changed on the direct billing side, and that's what we bill the insurances. You're still billing, I think Ambulance Authority last year, our billing was about four point eight million, in which we recovered two point seven. That's due to what, as you guys know, usual customer in charge is the insurance company. In order to be providers of these insurance companies, you have to bring in two, get on board with things. From the fee side, we've made a lot of changes. When I came in in two thousand and fourteen, your collection rate was between eighty-five and eighty-seven percent of what you billed. Up until a year ago, we've kept that at ninety point four to ninety-two percent of what we billed. Then if you look at some folks that pay late, overall, you're collecting about ninety-eight percent of what they're projected could be. Every household paid the sixty dollars. So, we've done a lot to try to recruit more of that money with this council. As you know, in two thousand and seventeen, the St. Farber Act that we really fought for a lot, allowing us to, for those folks that pay their household fee, we can still meet our obligation to give them free BLS, but build that insurance company. Because our agreement was with the citizens to buy that insurance company. So that helped a lot. And we will not violate the Statute of the Federal Law. So, we constantly stay active in the federal politics to get things passed so that we can collect more. You know, I don't think we'll ever get to that hundred percent mark person approved, but we're definitely taking bites out of it.
Ninety-eight percent of the fee that's projected to be collected is pretty darn good to where it used to be.
Well, two years ago, we were very fortunate to actually eclipse a hundred percent. And like I said, most of that was based on the penalties coming in, building back, you know, just to get back to. We're working with IT department to where our books were always two years behind. So we're working with the IT department now, we collect the certificate of occupancies. We're working on how we cross-reference lot numbers to district map and parcel, so that these are getting put in monthly. So, as this county approved over a year ago, if that goes in prior to January one, we'll send a prorated bill to that household. If it goes in after January one, they'll get the bill and then finish from here. So, as, you know, we're always collecting ideas of what we can do to capture that money that's out there, to prevent any type of increase in these things.
Did hear what you said, prorate. So that's how, that's how much on top of it you are.
I'm glad we've gotten all that squared away, but again, it's thankful to IT and programming, a lot of it.
It is, it's new ideas, new ways of doing business, and then having those young folks downstairs and know what work, what's in here, and get it to how it is.
It's exactly what we're talking about today, everybody working together for the same goal.
Yeah, you know, there's going to be, it's like a family. You know, I was going to agree with a brother or sister, but the fact is, you're going to support the decision that they made.
Well, especially if somebody pick on one of the brothers or sisters, it's easy to see how much you support them. Real quick.
Same thing. Some, we welcome the military too. We can sit here and talk about each other, but the first time a guy at the end of the bar says something, well, when did you, sir? I did, well, you shut the H up, or I'm going to get you.
Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Good morning.
Good morning. Chief, I haven't had an opportunity to congratulate you for taking my job yet, so congratulations.
Appreciate you. I like the forward thinking of, of looking at a more broader approach to our emergency services. I think that when we look to the east, that's probably what you will see is that lay, that type of layout. I would suggest that we chew on this a little bit slower than what, than what we are. They're currently, the Ambulance Authority and the Fire Board are both separate entities. You as council haven't even been able to convince them to do certain things that we'd like to have seen done. Such as, you know, even getting one agency in the, under the same roof as the other, to save a lot of money. Those things weren't, we weren't able to accomplish that. They're both their own entities today. Each along to a fire department, as their own corporations today. So, there's a lot of challenges there. You know, unless you abolish those particular boards and bring them under the county government, you truly, at the end of the day, you don't have control on what they do. You can make a suggestion or recommendation, but when that board votes, they vote. We've, we've seen that. So, I, I, I think I'm in favor with the concept of it. I would just like to see maybe some more conversation about it. And, and realize the fact that you truly today don't have authority over the Fire Board or the Ambulance.
I, I don't think we have authority over the Fire Board or the Ambulance Authority. I, I think, I think, well, I don't think I know you're exactly right on that. And that's why we went to them and asked them what their feeling was about the concept. The other thing is, is the volunteers. But I think at that point in time, I, I don't think it's anything different than the, the start that started when you came aboard, Berkeley Fire was starting to be developed, was that it was time, it was time to start thinking about how, how do we make this happen? Nothing's changed, you got five volunteer fire departments, you got Berkeley Fire, you got Berkeley County Council, you have Ambulance, you have the Fire Board, all housed in the same fire department. Or, or some Ambulances and Fire Departments, some of them are. I think, I, I think, I, I think the division director would be actually just broadening a lot of the stuff that you do day to day. And that is to try to make, to keep the, Berkeley Fire and the volunteers organized and, and, and thinking that they're going to continue to go forward and work together as a team. And that's, that's the reason for the division director. I, I, I think now's the time. I don't, I don't think we need to put it on a back burner. I think it's, it's, I think the people of Berkeley County deserves, everybody's starting to think of one. And they do on the job, they do it on the, in the, in the scene, at the scene all the time. This, this person won't get things done overnight, that's for sure. You know that better than anybody, right? It's going to take years.
I think before I came on council, one of the things that bothered me the most was that the council did not, and, and even though they don't have control over it, they have control over how the funding structure is done on all of these. And they, they can't change, any of these boards can't change what they do without the blessing of the council in order to make that happen. So, in, in my mind, and it always has been in my mind, that the council does control, to some extent, what goes on here. So to put them all under one director, to me, makes a lot of sense in order to do that. You know, there, there's a, there's a thing called the golden rule. And the reason that's set up that way is because of that rule. Because if the council is the one that decides how the purse strings are opened and closed, then they should have, they should have one, one uniform way of, of doing business, I think.
I think in a perfect world, I agree with you. But the way we're currently set up, it doesn't limit itself to that unless you're willing to have good funding.
Well, and you have to, that's always got to be an option on the table. That's always got to be an option on the table. Because if, if there's not, if, if there's not agreement of how it's going to go forward, and the board isn't going to, the board, I mean, the council, isn't going to bless that, then in order to, in order to facilitate that, you have to have somebody that's willing to make those hard decisions.
I think we got to make sure everybody's under the, is very clear about this. The Ambulance Authority still has their directive. The Fire Board will still have their directive. This, the, the division, maybe the division director we're talking about more is an organizer. You know what I mean? It's, it's not like the, the division director's going to go and tell Brian what he's going to do. That's not what happened, I agree with you on that. That's not intentions. The intention is to go to Brian and say, hey, what do you think about this? Or, or, or let's say, the volunteer fire departments, which pretty much falls under the Fire Board, under the funding mechanism. We know that there's always been tension between the way dispatch, dispatches, and the way the fire, volunteer fire departments and, and career and ambulances would like to see things done. And it's always been that they would go to each one at a time and talk. Where, where a division director or a division coordinator, whatever you want to call it, would be the point of contact and almost be like a mediator of going in and saying, hey, what do you think about this? Well, I don't like it. Well, let's find out the good things and the bad things, and let's work together, try to come up something.
And not only that, but that person, that person has to be strong enough to come back to this board and say, you guys are wrong. This is what these boards need to, to operate the way that they're supposed to be operating. And, and this board needs to be able to see that, 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 you know, the ambulance authority needs this and the fire authority needs this. You know, we had, we had a disconnect in the past. And one of the complaints was that, was that the individual fire departments didn't know what this council was talking about doing at one time and trying to, trying to help them out. And so there was a disconnect there. This, this position does away with that disconnect. It puts that individual there on their side as well, to come back to the council and say, you know, this is, this is the recommendation.
And one other thing, you're talking about purchasing and stuff like that. Tracy, in the time that she's taken over, nothing's economically has changed, been able to change a percentage and, and be able to save money. And then it's going to be more efficient. The fact, plus the fact, if you can bill at one time, that's another savings. So, it's not taking away the entities, it's allowing them to have a little bit more funding to work with. But right now, we're looking at a real funding shortage, shortage that you have to deal with numbers, have to put out more numbers.
Yeah, this, this person, by far, Eddie and I briefly talked about, this person will have to have very, very strong communication skills and be a very patient person.
Like I say, I am not against the, the concept. And I think on a larger scale, where this county will be, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Davis is, is trying to take us by, continue down the road with the council support. I think, I think that's very important. But I just, I see, I see some areas that are of concern, and that's my opinion.
I think, I think a prime example of this is, is when this council, for your, or this council agreed each and every one of us to quadruple the fire fees, because we knew that the fire departments were going to need help. Right, we knew that, we, we knew it, we have all the signs facing us. And, and we did that. But yet, the fire departments were offended by that, right? And at the same time, now the, some of the same fire departments that were offended by it is coming back around now. And I think they're starting to realize that we was, we was doing the right thing. Unfortunately, they, in my opinion, they have to be the one leading, pulling the wagon this time. Right, so, so I think that person is the one that would start going around and saying, hey, what do you think about this? But it has to be their idea. It can't be, it's kind of like, I don't want to relate, well, I won't relate it to. Because people don't, you can't give people help until they're ready to accept help. Right? So, all right.
I get it.
I get it.
Anybody else? All right. Move on to the next one then, Brian Ross and Heather Williams, Engineering Director and Planning Director. Update on the engineering planning permits in Llama. Yeah, he was trying to let the lady go first, right?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
As for updates, the engineering permit department, we'll start off. At the fiscal year, I was given a budget of one million one hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars to run the engineering permits department. hundred and thirty-five dollars to run the engineering permits department. Through the first third of this fiscal year, I've collected five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and six dollars and seventy-seven cents. That basically puts me at fifty-two point seven percent collected already this year. Just to give you an idea how busy we are. These numbers were comprised from July first to October thirty-first, so it doesn't even incorporate any numbers that could be added to it for the month of November. My department right now is currently averaging two hundred and seventy to three hundred plus permits a month. That's with a staff of fourteen people. In turn, with those permits being processed, I am averaging sixty to ninety inspections a day, which comprises both residential and commercial. That's currently being handled by basically five inspectors. We go through this daily, we, we do our travels, and then everybody helps out where they got to, to get these inspections done. We're working constant overtime to try to meet consistent turnaround times. As you guys see, I, I have worked quite a bit overtime. That's act the LAMA transition, and that's just the sheer numbers and volume that we're bringing in with the staff of fourteen that we need to do to accommodate the residents of the county. Just to give you some numbers, because I know you guys like numbers, first third of the year, so far from July first to October thirty-first, we did three hundred and forty-three single-family houses, one hundred and ten townhouses, twenty-five mobile homes, four duplexes, and seven multifamilies. That does not include anything from residential additions, decks, pole barns, garages, you name it, finished basements. We're, we're just swamped right now.
Hot water heaters.
Wait, I haven't been doing that. I know, I know. That'll, that'll be changing here probably in the future. Through that, through our LAMA transition, we developed One Stop Berkeley. One Stop Berkeley is an online submission. It is a very customer-friendly computer, or yeah, computer, online submission program to where you basically go in, you set up an account. It's kinda like an email and password. You go in, you get that account set up, and then boom, you're right there on online submissions. This was all new, this was a big change for everybody in the county. So Melanie and I created our own accounts through the One Stop Berkeley to aid all the phone calls of coming in, what do I do next? What do I do next? What do I do next? And to be honest with you, it's, it's been very successful. Companies like, let's just say, Dan Ryan, Ryan Holmes, LGI, Panhandle, E-Love, JBG, Four Points, JS, Banner House, and probably about ninety percent of all commercial strictly online. They may call once in a while, because as we all know, with automation, there is little quirks, good and bad, that we try to, we try to work them through. Time is still very demanding of the office staff, because now that you can apply online, we're talking twenty-four seven. I have some builders, that you come in Monday morning, they spent most of their Sunday applying for permits online. So that can be kinda frustrating, you're walking in, like, man, twenty houses already, and it's, it's ten after eight in the morning that I gotta process through. Now, just to walk you through this step, basically, when you apply for a permit online, it comes in, it goes down to the planning department for, basically like we did before with the act, to where they review it for subdivision regulations, make sure it's an approved parcel, approved lot, and also if there's any flood plain concerns. Once that is done, it comes up to the permits department. That permits department upfront, they do a completeness review, to where they double check, make sure planning is good with everything. We go roughly through the paperwork that's submitted, and then a fee is generated. That fee is then given to the applicant saying, we are ready for your fee payment. Once that fee payment is received, it goes back to the plan review. And then it just falls through the plan review, whether there's any revisions, changes, so on, so forth. And this is all done electronic. At the beginning, it was, it was kinda tough. Everybody wanted their paper and pencil, they wanted those plans set out there. But through our IT department, we have been able to get enlarged monitors to where we can do split screens. And for those of you that are builders, it's nice because I can have my foundation plan here, my first floor here, my second floor here, and it's still doing that same review. Now that we're four full months into this, my plan reviewers love it, because everything is electronic markup. I mean, there's no, it, it's amazing what you can do with this Bluebeam software and just mark up the plans and just have simple transactions via email instead of waiting for someone to call you back or wait for someone to stop in. It's, it's great, you know, there's.
No dead time.
What's that?
No dead time.
Right. I've heard it's a little difficult to find your property location in the program.
That's one of the things that we're continuously working on between the GIS layers, subdivision layers, and even, like, a lot of this stuff, we're having differences in the addresses and parcel identifiers, but it's just one of those things between IT and LAMA support, yeah, through Davenport that we're working through every time we see a small issue like that, to try to get it fixed and move forward with it. But yes, that is, that is one of the things. Because, and especially if someone clicks on the wrong parcel or the wrong lot, and it can create a headache, but Melanie and I have administrative abilities that we can go in and relocate your permit to your correct parcel if there is a mistake made and it's proven. So that's, that's a good thing also. We're still having walk-in. It's always gonna be there. You're still gonna have a lot of people in the county that don't wanna deal with the software. One of the downturns of that with this new LAMA software is if you walk in with a set of house plans, before, we would take it, we're got your fee payment, you're gone. Now with this new LAMA software, you need to spend at least two-thirds more of the time in the office, because I need to say, President Copenhagen, how many bedrooms? How many bathrooms? Water, electric, sewer, you know what I mean? I have to go through every single item, and you need to give me that information. I think eventually in turn, the people that are coming in, the builders that are still coming in, are gonna be like, I'm wasting too much time in this office, I need to get online. And we're seeing it, but it's not a full one-hundred percent transition. And I'm still gonna have my walk-ins with my decks, my garages, my homeowners, and stuff like that. But, you know, it, in a nutshell, based off of the numbers that we're doing, the online has made a huge difference. It has made a huge difference. We're, with the online submission, once again, pros and cons. Pros, twenty-four seven submission. Cons, my turnaround times are fluctuating so much. I know before, when everything was walk-in, I could give you guys a consistent, a, two weeks, three weeks. Now it's fluctuating so much, because when I have builder A submitting fifteen houses on Sunday, that just throws my turnaround time out. And I know you guys are understanding of that, but it, right now, with the numbers, it's, we're fluctuating quite a bit. But we're getting things done. And I'm sure if I wasn't getting things done, you guys would be hearing about it. The only other thing I have.
Or you'd be seeing us, right?
What's that?
Or you'd be seeing us, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. The only other thing that I'm working on right now currently, along with minor changes with the software, me and Melanie are working with LAMA, is electrical inspections. As we know in the county, electrical inspections are done third party. Until we started working some of the major bugs out of this LAMA software to get some sort of constant flow from submission to issuance to UNO, I held off on involving the electrical inspectors at all. It's still paper. They're submitting their electrical inspections through paper. We now have what's called a LAMA Mia app. It's a mobile app, download on your, on your cellphone. Gary and I are working with LAMA to work out a couple quirks in it, because currently right now, I could go in and sign off on your electrical inspection. I'm trying to have a Dropbox build-in to where, when that electrical inspector signs on, on his phone, puts in that permit number, it is signed off and updated in my LAMA software that Mr. Elder did this inspection, or Mr. Clark did this inspection. That should hopefully be up and going in the next four to six weeks, depending on the turnaround from LAMA.
All right, well, I think your office, you and your office have done a wonderful job keeping up with the pace and working late hours and early mornings on trying to learn the new software and everything. Heard very few minor complaints, but not much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
How long do you say it's going to be before you get live on the electrical inspections? What'd you say?
Right now, it's, it's in the seat of LAMA. Gary and I communicated actually yesterday, sent an email out. I'm hoping it's less than four weeks, but.
And they'll be able to do that job site on their tablet, they can.
They'll be able to, while on their phone or on their tablet, punch, they'll be able to sign in under a user, put in that permit number for that lot, sign off on the rough end or final electric inspection, have their name assigned to it, and it'll automatically download to our LAMA software desktop or tablets, so that we can see, all right, I already got your final electric, I don't, I ain't waiting on paper anymore.
Right.
It'll be automatic. So that's the, that's the next hurdle, but I think it's pretty small.
Okay. Anybody else have any question?
I'm just so amazed where we are now compared to where we, where we started.
I'm just curious about the health and health permits and those type of things. Is that going to be a process to sometime, or is it always still gonna be the same way? That, that has to come in with the permit process?
That, we are accepting that through via email, or, you know, they, they'll send it either to the engineering specs, or you can upload those documents along with your application submit.
Right, but what I'm talking about is the health department doesn't have the ability to shoot it right into the program?
No.
Oh.
No.
Or the sewer board or water board?
Right now, it's just central dispatch for that.
Okay.
All right.
Brian, before you step away, you've been chief of the council for five properties. Oh, yeah, I currently have four, which is gonna be six violations submitted to the court. We, property, property code violations. Anything from, I have one that is basically trash, scrap metal, vehicles and that, which is, I won't name the addresses. I have another one that brought in a bunch of illegal taxis from DC and just basically decided to store them down in the Inwood, Naperville Station area. It was almost thirty.
Three.
Yeah, they just decided to bring them there.
They're unlicensed?
Unlicensed, yeah. We found out, well, I'm working with DOH with that one, that Jason Oates, he also has a violation against them also, so, for an illegal salvage yard. I have a structure in the northern end of the county that we've been trying for months to get in touch, and it's gonna be a demo. I'm asking for demolition on that one. And another one is just non-compliance of, of property maintenance, junk, trash, rodents, and everything like that. I have a couple more that I'm working on. We decided that once we, I have it set up now through my, through LAMA, that one, you're gonna get courtesy letter. If you don't contact me in thirty days, I'm gonna send you a violation letter. After the violation letter, I will try to reach out to you one more time. If not, it's going over to the prosecuting attorney's office.
These are longstanding issues.
Excuse me?
These are longstanding issues.
Yes.
These are complaints that have been out there for a long time.
Yeah.
And the prosecuting attorney's office, prosecuting attorney, has designated one of her agents to assist Brian. So again, there's another area of cooperation that we may not have had in a couple years ago. And these are areas, particularly Mrs. Malt, and certain misses to the council, that Brian is actively doing.
Have you involved any other agencies, health department, DEP, like that?
DEP, yes, yeah. DEP's involved in the one because of illicit discharges and that. DOH is involved with the one because of an illegal salvage yard. Most of it that we're focusing on right now is dilapidated structures and property maintenance. And one that's a thorn in your side, that I'll talk to you about a break, is probably going in the next thirty days.
What about the one that you and I have been working on for a good while?
Which one?
That, that, that they were doing some.
Oh.
Are they continuing to do that?
Yes, up in Jarrettstown. The residents of that are moving to Morgantown. Where they are taking their stuff, I don't know, because the gentleman that's been emailing you and I, as you noticed, has not been as significant. And we're doing thirty-day evals on that.
Right.
And we've made significant changes in that property out there, because the original owners are taking the tenants and moving them out.
Right.
And along with their junk.
Good.
And believe it or not, just through these first couple, word of mouth is traveling fast, I'm getting a lot better turnaround on initial violations because of the fact that, all right, we're not joking anymore, we, we got cooperation, and if you don't wanna be compliant, it's not fair to the other residents of this county.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, Heather. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I gave you some visuals in your packet. When it comes to the LAMA software, I really think that the visual aid helps, because there's so much activity, and it changes by the moment. In the past, when I would do an Excel spreadsheet, I would have an update that was current as of a certain day. What the LAMA tool does for us is it's a, a fluid evaluation of where projects stand in our process. So I gave you a few visuals, and I just wanted to highlight a few things in it, and then if you have more questions based on what you see, I, I'd be happy to answer them. The first one is a view of our internal plant, projects tab. So this is something that we all, anybody that has an internal LAMA user ID has the ability to see this. Under the projects tab, there's an option on the left-hand side that says all projects. And then I can go into that list and search if I'm approaching the time where I might need a sketch plan public hearing ad run. I can go into the sketch plan tab and see if there's anything close. This example in front of you is for final plaques. So we recently put together our agenda for the upcoming meeting on Monday night, and to prepare for that, I can sort the current status of all of these final plaques. And then I can see which ones are returned to the applicant and the additional submissions. And then I can see where it's ready to be placed on an agenda. So you see everything that says planning commission, that was the, the step that had just happened. So there are projects that already made it to an agenda. So this list really helps to go through everything that's been submitted to us since LAMA started. And we can not only see what's up and coming, but we can also see projects that have been submitted and they're sitting idle. So that's a step that we haven't had in the past, where as soon as we reviewed, sent comments out, it went into a drawer, and then we just waited for the applicants to submit again. This, this gives us a list to say, we haven't heard from you since October, but we only needed a Department of Highways permit. Do you have it yet? We're setting the agenda, you could be ready. So that's one of the things that we, we have the ability to do now.
So how's your staff adapting?
They're doing okay. It's, it's a challenge. On the next page, to get these lists in the format that you see, it requires a lot of methodical, they're not just doing their reviews, they have to click these. They have to click, so they review a project, and then they have to click and say, I've reviewed the project. So there, there is a lot more button clicking involved, but that clicking. So, there, there is a lot more button clicking involved, but that clicking replaces the physical micromanagement of walking around saying, where are you, where are you, how are you doing? So, in the long run, I think it'll be more well received, but it, it's initially added more time to, to our activities. In the long run, once we get our habits down, I think it'll be second nature. The second page that says preliminary plans, an example, so that's just another list sorted the same way. But I've shown you the events tab to the right-hand side. This is five US states, and this project has already been finalized. So, you can see, if you want to know a turnaround on a certain project, you can click on it in the, the list view, and then this application was submitted July fourteenth, and then it was finalized September first. So, depending on what you wanted to find, it's all in there, it's just a matter of knowing where to look and, and knowing which tab to click. The, and, and I'll show you high view state again on another slide. This is the internal view for everything that has access to Lama, and then I can show you what that looks like from the outside user. On the, the next page that says major plan changes, on the events tab, you can see the first few activities can, have been completed, and that was actually submitted by Steve Cianovich. So, you can see the ones, when it said Sarah Taylor, that was where it was emailed to her or brought to her in some method, and she was the one that put it into the system. But as you look through, you would, you'll see more application submittals that are actually coming from the, the engineers. On this instance, it's a potomac station, and we're at the stage where Laura reviewed it on November second. And so, that's labeled as returned to applicant, and the next step to occur is materials resubmitted by the applicant. So, at a glance, we can see that that one's reviewed and waiting to be submitted, and then everything else is pending. One of the challenges is our planning commission meeting date gets auto-populated. It, it doesn't get shared to the public, but it's put in there as a target date. If our circulation of revisions gets to the point that it goes past the, the projected date, I have to go in there manually and push it back out. So, that's one of the things that we're working through to see how the system works now and if there's a better way to do it. The next page is what the outside user actually sees if they log in. Brian mentioned getting a user ID for himself and Melanie. I've done that as well, and so has Sarah. So, if you go into, after you have a login, the advanced search feature, you can search for projects, and then I entered high view as, as an example, project name, the next page will show you how our, what, it pulls up a list of everything for high view. Another challenge that we're working through is, I know that this list is high view because I typed it in, but when you look at it, it's nowhere in the identifiers. We have a parcel ID, we have the project type, and the case number, and a reference code that we really don't use. We've asked Lama to add the project name in there, and they're not able to do that. So...
So, you gotta know what you're looking for?
Yes. So, on the, so, since I typed one specific project, I know that both of these projects are high view projects. And then I can click on the, the blue view button. So, I did that for the example project I have, and then the next page shows you the list of all the dates. So, all the dates that you can see on our internal Lama, this is what the, any outside user can see. So, it's not just the applicant, but if a neighbor nearby wants to know what's going on and how far along your project is, they're able to see all of these things as well. And then the, the last page is, there's just two tabs at the top, so the first thing I showed you was the overview. If we click the documents tab, then this shows everything. This is our new ACT online database. So, the documents tab shows every document that has been circulating for a project. And with Lama, it's now sorted by category instead of unallocated. So, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the public and people that are pulling up projects and information on that. That's a lot of information. I feel like a teacher where I could just talk about all the different features, and it really does depend on who's...
I'm, I'm not interested in learning how to do it.
So, I was hoping to show you the, the angle of how to track and what, what information you might want to see, and if there, there is something...
I have somebody that does all that for me, and thank goodness, because I am not one bit interested in learning how to do all that.
Right.
And, and on the flip side of that, I feel that, I feel that it, it's, it's needed to, in order to become more proficient at what we're doing, but I also think that we're losing, we're losing that personal connection of coming in and having that personal relationship and meeting with somebody and being able to do those when we start doing as much as we're doing online. But I, I appreciate the work that goes into it, that's for sure.
Our visitor count has certainly dropped without that.
I'm sure.
Our phone call count, I think, has gone up. So, if we're not getting, we're not getting the face-to-face for a lot of reasons, but they, we're really trying hard to have the phone call conversations at least to say, if there's any issues with submitting, call us and, and we'll work through it. And Sarah's been incredible with that. So, a lot of the getting stuff submitted and in looks transparent to me, but she's out there just walking people through how to do it.
It sounds like you've got a pretty good grasp on it.
It's, it's the first layer.
Yeah, it's a learning process.
She's very hesitant about responding to that.
I know, she's been, that's been a couple of times. She's like, she's like changed the subject when you were talking earlier about something. She did.
I, I equate it to, like, when you're driving, I'm teaching my children to drive right now. So, you can get in a car and you can go down the street, but whether you know all the bells and whistles and the cruise control and all of that stuff, like, I tell them, that's, that's for later, let's figure out the turn signal first. So, I, I really feel like this system is the same way. It, it has a lot of bells and whistles, but we're, we're just not there yet.
So, it sounds like you've got the brake figured out.
Yes.
Ms. Heather, I see here on the case numbers, those were the years that the original plaques and things were conceptually put in.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. The, the case number, the first two digits are the year, so, two thousand twenty, that two zero is the twenty. So, next year, all of the case numbers will start with twenty-one. The second two digits are the month. So, on the very first page for home place, that project came in, in November of two thousand twenty. The last three digits are the counter for the entire year of, of cases coming through the projects department. So, we are up to three hundred eighteen cases submitted through Lama since July.
What I was thinking was that these were some older plaques that they were finished in, like, two thousand seven.
If it's something that came through in ACT and we're cleaning them up, it would be called revisions. So, there's a communities of Verwell Phase Six that says revisions, and then it lists the previous one. So, that's...
I was just saying, I thought...
Right, for timing.
Are we about, we should be about filled up on all of the old, as far as working through all the old plans and things that were here.
It, it really depends on the developer and how fast they want to get through them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heather?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you and your, to your, you and your staff. They're doing a wonderful job trying to keep up and keep the pace and, and learn all the, all the software, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
While Brian and Heather are here, I just want the council to appreciate the, the work that you were planning and engineering for many steps to lead us to this point. As you know, we purchased the software well over a year ago. We purchased it, purchased it with no additional allocations, request from the council, first and foremost, remember. We purchased it from fees that were generated by our IT department. So, we did a number of counting and counseling for the additional funding. The, the evolution from ACT to Lama was probably more difficult than was anticipated. As you know, ACT was twenty, couple years old, or we had been using it for twenty, couple years, it was no longer supported, and it was originally developed as a, as a mass marketing, kind of a poll polling software that we had modified over the years to be used for what we wanted it for. And every modification changed a little bit. So, unlike some of the software migrations we've done in the past, we couldn't do what I call up, and Gary printers every time I say this, we couldn't do a data dump. We couldn't take all the, all the data that was in ACT and dump it into Lama, because a field that we may have used in, you know, two thousand was, we were using, putting the data in a different field in two thousand five. So, there was a lot of manual manipulation that went into it. So, the fact that we're, that we went live in June, and that they've made the progress that they have in, you know, this short period of time is, is absolutely incredible. And we all know the late hours and weekends that they've worked. We were here Monday night late, and as we were walking down the hall, you heard, you could hear in the folks in engineering talking at seven o'clock in the evening, that they're working. So, that's important to note. The information that Heather gave you, the screenshot that she gave you, once we have this software developed to the point where we're pretty comfortable with it, the council will have read-only access, so that you can go in from the comfort of your home, on your iPad and check where, you know, how, you know, how projects are evolving. I know every once in a while, you get a call from an engineer or developer that says, doggone it, I, I dropped my plans off to the planning department two months ago, and I haven't heard a word back. You can go in and say, well, yeah, you, you dropped your plans off two months ago, but, you know, we care if you dropped them off, they send them back to you with some, with, you know, some articles, and you haven't responded yet. So, you'll have the ability to, to see all the projects and drill down. And then the last thing I want to point out, while the council was in Canvas on Tuesday, I had a commercial developer stop in and see me and compliment the county on the ease of access to the planning, the engineering, and your assessor's department. And he could not believe how well they all work together. So, I just wanted to point out that typically, we typically hear complaints, and this was an individual that went out of his way to say how remarkably professional and helpful everyone had been, so.
Right.
But it's because of your two departments here, they have worked long and hard to get where we're at, and Mrs. Small and I have talked about the way things were fifteen years ago, the way they worked ten years ago, and it's, it's pretty remarkable.
I'm, I'm doing some permitting in another county, and, yeah, it's, it's where we were thirty years ago.
Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, you go to this, and you can literally, in one office, you can see that one there and see that one there, oh, you gotta go to this office. Where's it at? Right there. You walk over there and there, they'll tell you, oh, you gotta go down there, and they get information and go back and forth, and then you get it all the way done, and it's like, oh, no, that's the wrong thing, you gotta start over, you gotta go back over here. It's like, are you kidding me?
All right. We jumped around a little bit today because we're so far ahead of schedule. Any items from the public?
Gerald's here.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna catch him. I just wanted to see Jennifer back there and stuff, but Jennifer, did you have any concerns? Okay.
Jennifer and Kevin are here because of your, the discussion regarding the...
Correct.
And the council could not convene or...
Well, I think, I think the direction that we, I think we've indicated is for me to go ahead and post the provision.
Okay.
And it would, it takes several months to go through that process.
I agree. Is that a consensus of the council?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and then you was talking about Eddie retirement and talking about getting Mr. Billy about filling in. I wouldn't think that would be a conversation you would have with him and...
Yes, sir.
Come back to us and let us know, and go from there.
I will.
All right, so, Mr. Delagetti, I might need a little bit of your help. All right, so, we have, we're, I've asked for anything, item from the public, and no one came forward. So...
A motion to recess and then reconvene.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We need a motion to recess the county council.
Mr. President?
Motion been made. Any second on that?
Second.
Second. So, we are recessed in, in county council, but we're gonna now need a, I guess, just do a motion to reconvene the Canvas.
Mr. President, reconvene is...
Second.
All right, we are back in session on Board of Canvas. Good afternoon, good morning, Mr. Shul.
Good morning.
So, this is the day three of the meeting of the Board of Canvas. We used yesterday as an opportunity to enter all of the provisional votes that this board convened. Clerk Small is with us today and after we're done, and you sign off on the results, I'll turn to Clerk Small to declare the results as official for the election. Before I get into the numbers and the paperwork, I want to thank this Board of Canvas, but also in your role as county council for the support and interest you paid to this election. I think the involvement of this council is the envy of every county in this state when it comes to supporting and interest in the election process, and personally, he's the ultimate. I'm happy to report, actually, if I may approach and provide these to you. These are stamped official, but they're not official until your signature goes on the original copy.
Thank you.
There are no changes in any... There's no change in any outcomes. After adding in those absentee ballots which came in after the election, after adding in some additional early vote totals which came from one machine which didn't properly transfer results onto the memory chip, and that's been added in as, as we discussed during the earlier days of Canvas. The turnout for this election was a fifty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-five votes. That's eight thousand two hundred plus more than any election in the history of working county. Turnout percentage was sixty-two point one one percent. The first time in this century that it's been over sixty percent. Historical records go back another twenty, thirty years that I can find from the Secretary of State, and it's the highest voter turnout in, in at least the last fifty years. So, it was an historic election. The results are before you. We have prepared the audit paperwork that's required by the Secretary of State, and so I have two items to ask for you to sign today, and if you can sign them while we're in session, then we can transmit them immediately to the Secretary of State as required by, by post. The first is the Canvas precinct audit verification form. This is a new form developed that Secretary of State implemented under emergency rule to verify that every county that's followed the proper steps for conducting the Canvas. And by signing this form, you are certifying that members of the Board of Canvas for working the county certify that all required procedures set forth in CSR one fifty-three, eighteen, seven have been followed, as above is reflected on this form. And that is what we did over Monday and Tuesday of this week, and the council is here, the county council is here, that you have any questions on that process. They asked us how many precincts that were audited. They asked us how many precincts that were audited. We did two, which is the required amount for a county with our number of precincts. They asked us to list all the names of individuals who participated. All of your names are on there as well as all of the volunteers who were sworn in to prepare. In the two precincts that we counted, we list on this audit form that in precinct 34, there was a shift of one vote in the hand count from the machine count. And that went from President Biden to a white end candidate. And there was a one vote shift between President Trump and candidate Howie Hawkins in precinct 41. The code allows for a 1% deviation in precinct 34. That would have been at six votes. We were well within that deviation number. And precinct 41, that was at eight votes, we were well within that deviation number. So there was no requirement for additional hand counts. The precinct audit worksheets that are behind that officially list the following findings of Board of Canvassers for each of those two precincts. Number one, the deviation between the tabulated results and the hand count results of the same ballots is less than 1% of the total vote cast. And finding number two, the results of the hand count are verified as added. So I will ask you to sign this. The second document is the summary page for the election. There's a place for each of you to sign on the final page of that as well as a place for the county clerk to certify. Once you sign that, then the election results are declared official by the Canvas Board. Clerk Small can announce that and then during the Canvas Board, in 48 hours, which would be Monday at approximately the same time the Secretary of State would give us the exact time, or the council needs to convene to certify those results. Within that 48 hours window, any candidate may request a recount from this Canvas Board earlier set by... So any questions before I pass up the paperwork for your signatures?
No. How many students do we have about, kind of?
How many what?
How many students was it, 19,000?
19,000.
You get 19,000, add that to the 83,000, right? That just puts us, what, 102,000? That means there's roughly 19,000 people that aren't registered or it could be younger than school age.
Right, right, right.
Sure. But, but that's, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good amount.
Writing the math on this, from August 1st until we close the voter registration deadline, we were processing 2,000 new registrations per one.
Do you know what that number was last, last presidential election? How many registered voters we had?
Roughly 76,000.
76?
On August 1st, we had 79,300. 4,000 added to the last. And now that's, once things are declared official, we have the precinct by precinct reports for any candidates to view and be uploaded to the Secretary of State website. Access at gobotwv.com and any person can see the precinct by precinct results.
Is that right?
And that's, what is that address?
Govotewv.com. All one word, gobotwv.com.
Is that already up?
As soon as they sign off, we'll upload it in a few moments. I believe there's approximately 20 counties left in the state to go through this process that we're going through this morning. That was as of this morning. I imagine most of them will be official today. Ask Clerk Small to certify, to declare the results official.
All right, Clerk Small. Part, Part County, and I think it's, what's your people? Do I declare that the election of November 3rd, keep wanting this people certified by the corporation? Everything is...
Thank you, Mr. Small.
Please sign in Board of Canvas.
Okay, all right. Need to recess on Board of Canvas.
We are recessed.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you, John.